Session of the planning commission. Do we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Quigula.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Landon.
Here.
Commissioner Salzner is on vacation and are off and we have one app, one open position. That's it?
Thank you.
Did I forget anyone? Nope.
It's me, but I'm here.
Oh, of course. Commissioner McKinley.
President. So tonight we have a 90 minute work session and it's a little bit longer than usual, but we'll be hearing an update on the development code update project. And with that, I will hand it over to Mark Rust.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Mark Rust with the city of Springfield. And as you've heard quite a bit about in the past, we have been working for, it's coming up on three years that we've been working on the development code update project. And we've had a few setbacks here and there with kind of the COVID, as well as some of the housing stuff with the state, the new House Bill 2001 for middle housing. The timeline for the project's been extended, but we are nearing the point of releasing to the public for the housing stuff, at least for the second time, draft code sections. And I'm going to go ahead and share my screen while I'm thinking of it. I'm just going to share the materials from the packet, so it might be helpful for us to all be seeing the same thing, but this, nothing will be different from what you should have in front of you in the packet as well. So where we're at, just to kind of brief update on moving forward with launching the public outreach, community outreach at the end of June. And the ideas that we'll be releasing both phase one and phase two of the project, that is, the phase one is the housing section and then phase two is the employment lands. We've been talking mostly about housing, I think, in the past. The employment land stuff is coming along as well. We anticipate that a majority of the conversation will be about housing though, due to the state law changes around what the city is required to permit in terms of housing and middle housing. So that's going to be our focus tonight is kind of diving a little bit deeper into, from what we've talked with more conceptually about in the past. Tonight I'm actually presenting kind of more solidified recommendations on where we're going with proposed code, but wanting your feedback on this information prior to actually releasing it. I will be going to the city council on June 7th to get kind of their final, hopefully go ahead to engage with the broader community engagement. And then returning to the planning commission, June 15th, for presenting to you the draft of the virtual open house that we hope to launch. And as I think meeting with you as your role as the CCI to also get feedback on that community engagement strategy. At one of our previous meetings, I think it was Chair McKinley and others maybe expressed interest in getting kind of a summary of the community outreach that we have done so far. So attachment one to your packet tonight is a kind of just a bulleted or listed summary of the community engagement that to date that we've, that's taken place for both phases, phases related to housing and employment land. There's no description of kind of the feedback we've received through this community engagement. And I can provide some more details on that, but I do want to say that the draft code sections included in your packet tonight and a lot of what we'll be talking about directly related to middle housing. Where we're at with the recommendation today, I would say does reflect the community feedback we've gotten to this point so far. I would say the majority of the community feedback for the middle housing has come from the Housing Technical Advisory Committee. And this date range here from January of 2019 through February of 2021 is pretty lengthy and just to recap, we had started with housing at the outset and had released some draft code sections anticipating how middle housing was going to be implemented prior to the administrative rules being finalized at the state level. It was realized once those administrative rules were finalized that we needed to revisit those previous draft housing code sections. And so we reconvene the TAC, got additional input on the middle housing. And then are now nearing the point of releasing the second round of housing code sections. So that's why this timeframe is considerably longer. We have been working on the housing stuff for a couple of years now. Where the employment lands tack is, you know, more along the lines of one year. It's phase two, obviously, so it hasn't been going as long. But we've also gotten directional on the way from the governance committee, which involves two of this body, two planning commissioners, as well as two city councillors. Been convening with city staff all throughout the process. This eight meetings of city staff actually doesn't really reflect all the internal meetings that have been happening. These are more of the formal or broader city staff meetings that I've held. There's been a lot of, I'd say, one-on-one and smaller kind of issue-specific meetings and conversations that have happened with city staff that are reflected. And then you can see in the list, all the planning commission meetings we've held and city council meetings. And then a number of presentations that have taken place. Commissioner Bergen and I were just discussing this meeting coming up in two days to the Springfield Realtors. On May 20th, I'll be presenting to them and a couple more coming up in June and July. We intend to ramp up the broader community outreach. The community outreach we've been doing for the last couple of years has been more focused. There's been developer interviews, you know, different topic-specific conversations, but the broader public outreach will be gearing up to do toward the end, launching at the end of June. We'll be now trying to really engage with the entirety of the Springfield community. And so I don't know, I can pause at this point and see if there's any questions about this community outreach summary. Otherwise I can just move on and we can save all the questions till the end. So it's up to you at this point.
Commissioner Quigula.
Yes, I had a question, Mark, regarding the community outreach. There's been a couple of times that I asked if we could get sort of a CAD layout or maybe 3D layout of what some of the proposed triplex and fourplex might look at their largest on a city lot. If we do end up going with the minimal setbacks and the maximum height and maximum lock coverage, et cetera. Would that be part of what we're preparing for the community outreach?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Quigula. I do recall our discussion about that previously. I know at one point you had a request for a citywide map that would show kind of the massing. And so I'm not sure, and I know I responded to you on that and it was kind of beyond the scope of what I think we could provide. So at this point, are you looking for more of like just a lot specific example of kind of what massing might look like?
Yes, I think that to see, for instance, I think it would be nice to see something that was in like a, maybe a perspective view that would show what like one of the larger variety of fourplexes with the maximum height and minimal setbacks would look like on the smallest lot as a proposal.
So similar to say these drawings I'm on the screen now, but something to scale that reflects a minimum lot size and the maximum development standards.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I can explore that. I know it's, it's been, you know, our resources are limited, I would say, in terms of developing graphics. And these graphics that are included in all these materials I have taken from other sources and none of them, we have developed ourselves in-house at all. So a lot of these are directly from DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation Development at the state themselves and different consultants they've hired through different grant assistance opportunities to provide graphics. So, but I can see if we can come up with something. I've done just for my own self, some very rudimentary sketches and things. But I can pursue that. At this point, to answer your question, we, we haven't prepared anything along those lines to release with the public engagement materials, but I, I hear that it sounds like that would be a good visual to have, so I'll pursue that.
Yes, I even think that your rudimentary sketches might be very illustrative.
Great.
Mark, and also addressing Commissioner Quigula, there was some work done across the river in Eugene with some test fits regarding the minimum standards. So we may be able to reach out to staff over there to see if we could borrow them.
That's great. Thank you, Chair McKinley. And, and I have been coordinating with Eugene staff. I mean, I've taken a lot of the material actually from city of Eugene and that the House Bill 2001 has very similar impacts in the way they need to be implemented to both city of Springfield, to how city of Eugene is having to implement them. And in fact, a lot of the questions posed in a lot of these questions and attachment to tonight are basically directly from the city of Eugene materials. They've been kind enough to allow me to borrow all this stuff. I've had conversations with staff over there about doing that as well as some of the graphics. So I'll pursue that, those test fit diagrams from city of Eugene as well to use as maybe examples that we can model a diagram off of as well.
So that was test, test fits with an F, not test pits with a P?
Yes, it's with an F.
To see how a fourplex might fit on a lot. Is that, I think, the idea?
That is correct.
Great. Unless there's any other questions, I'm going to go ahead and jump into this attachment too then. So just to kind of recap, what middle housing is, I know you've heard this multiple times, but the state, the House Bill 2001 and the implementing administrative rules do define what middle housing includes. It's duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, or I refer to them as fourplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters. I will just take a second to mention that there is also new legislation coming along. And I believe, I don't want to misspeak, but I'm pretty sure Senate Bill 458 that is in this current legislative session that's in underway right now through the end of June, there was a bill sent, this Senate Bill 458 passed already. And I believe is on the way to the governor's desk to be signed that is related to, I call it the expedited land division bill for middle housing. And my brief understanding of what this legislation will do is allow division of these middle housing types so that the units can be on their own lots. That dynamic plays into a little bit of, I think it throws in a new dynamic to how we've been contemplating some of these middle housing types. And I'll use the example of say, a triplex versus townhomes. And there's some very minor differences existing in the administrative rules for how we allow a triplex versus how we allow townhome development currently. And the townhomes are defined as single units on individual lots. So these would all be on their own property, one unit on one lot, where a triplex are three units on one lot. The new legislation will allow now a triplex to be divided so that each unit is on its own lot. So it definitely.
Mark?
Sure.
I was reminded to, before we have further discussion, have the commissioners declare their conflicts of interest? Is it all right if we do that? Or potential conflicts of interest? So I guess I will lead us off and just go through. So just as a reminder, with the middle housing project and with the development code update project, we, or sorry, not middle housing project, with the development code update project and the implementation of House Bill 2001, we just need to identify if we have potential conflicts of interest. So I'll go first, Chair McKinley, and I do not own property within Springfield city limits. So I have no potential conflicts of interest. Vice Chair Landon.
I do own property in Springfield, but I do not have a potential conflict of interest that I'm aware of.
So Commissioner, if you own residential property in Springfield, then you have a potential conflict of interest with this project because the changes will affect every residential property in Springfield. You can't have an actual conflict because you don't make any final decisions on this project. But the Oregon Government Ethics Commission has advised that every commissioner who owns property in Springfield or who has an immediate relative who owns property in Springfield that's residential would be affected by this project because it will touch on every residential property in Springfield.
Good clarification. Thank you. I have a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Commissioner Gill.
Um, I also own property in the city of Springfield and so have a potential conflict of interest.
Thank you. Commissioner Bergen.
Have a potential conflict of interest being a property owner in Springfield and being a licensed real estate broker in Oregon, practicing in Springfield.
Thank you. And Commissioner Quigula.
Own real property in the city of Springfield, both occupied and vacant.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for permitting that interruption and I'll leave you to it.
Great, thanks. No problem. Anyway, so I think what I was saying was the Senate Bill 458 allowing divisions of these middle housing types kind of grazed the lines a little bit in my mind between some of them. And so for instance, you know, there's, like I said, some differences between the design standards for how a triplex is developed versus townhomes. But if somebody then develops a triplex and later divides it, you know, the design standards almost become mute, the differences between the design standards potentially become moot. And then I think similarly, one of the conversation points I have in tonight's materials ask the question, should we allow, say cottage clusters to permit individual cottages to be on their own lots? And I think we can still have that discussion or decision, but again, I think with the implementation of Senate Bill 458, allowing land division of middle housing types, that also kind of decision point has now been made for us by the state. But anyway, so we can talk more about those as they come up, but it's just another compounding kind of state law that plays into all this. So with that, the way the state wrote the middle housing rules are pretty prescriptive, I would say. I've laid out this tiered approach and again, I kind of borrowed or stole this tiered approach from city of Eugene. And I want to make sure I don't confuse any of the planning commissioners in how I'm using these terms. City and specifically, and Chair McKinley pointed this out and obviously she has experience working with city of Eugene and but that our usage of the term incentivize in these examples is considerably different potentially from how city of Eugene may use the term incentivize for some of these options. So we may not be meaning the same thing in a lot of cases as city of Eugene is meaning when they're talking about incentivizing some of these options. I've left, for the most part, the incentivize option kind of off the recommendation at this point, based on the feedback I did get from the technical advisory committee. However, some of the areas for decision points don't lend themselves exactly well to a three options, rather just kind of two options. So in, in some of the cases, whether we, I really kind of talk about allow or encourage and encourage and incentivize might be the same thing. There, it's kind of one or two. It's, there's not a one, two, or three option, if that makes sense. So hopefully that'll become more clear as we go through some of this. So I, I think I mentioned, but the intent of a lot of these questions tonight, I don't intend to try and get specific answers or responses from the planning commission tonight on these in terms of how you vote for each of these. What these questions are being formed to be included in the community survey that I'm planning to release at the end of June. And so getting the community's feedback on all of these. So if there's thoughts or ideas from the commission tonight on how some of these questions might be worded or presented, I'm completely open to any input or feedback on that. I see a hand. I don't know if Chair wants to call in Commissioner Bergen.
Mr. Bergen.
Thank you. I did have a question when I was reviewing these earlier. Where it states recommendation, is that purely for us this evening and city council? Or will that recommendation be included in the survey?
Yeah, that's a good question, Commissioner Bergen. Thank you for that. And so I would say it wouldn't necessarily be included in the survey, but where it will be reflected is in the draft code that will go out to the public. So that not that it's been decided that, but again, based on the, at least the technical advisory committee and other community input I've received so far, that's where we've landed, but those, there's still decision points to be made there. So again, I think to reiterate and hopefully answer your question directly, I don't, I would not be including those recommendations in the community survey specifically.
Okay, thank you. I just would be cautious of staring on the answers if we're wanting to get true, pure answers.
Yeah, that's a great point. You know, in that we are releasing these early drafts of the code and they do, I mean, we are recommending, this is kind of the starting point of the discussion that may lead to steering people a little bit, but I think it, it gives up an opportunity to react, whether it should be less or more from those starting points.
Thank you.
So again, I, I'm not expecting that we will get responses. If, if the commissioners tonight want to provide feedback on these questions, I'm happy to entertain that. But and this, or feedback on the farm or the presentation of these questions as well, but but I am going to go through them to just walk the commission through. I think these are kind of the high points of where the city does have flexibility in implementing the middle housing legislation. And really the allow options, I'm going to scroll down towards the bottom of the packet here. One, and you've seen a very similar table to this before. This is just another visual way to represent the other information, the questions. But this allow column or option one is, is really the minimum, for the most part. Saying minimum and maximum can get a little confusing, but the allow option is the minimum we have to allow or at the, we, it's the, we can't go below these allow provisions that are required by state law. So this allow column and the allow options are what the state law requires us to do. Now we, so in terms of flexibility, we can't require, and again, I even get confused in my own head whether I say we require less or require more. I'm looking for a good example of, so I'm going to use parking as a quick example. So for instance, the state rules say for a triplex, the most parking we can require is three spaces. We can be more flexible and require less than that, but we do not have the flexibility to require more than that. We can't say, oh, for a fly, for a triplex, we're going to require four spaces or more than three spaces. Anyway, hopefully it doesn't get too confusing, but I just wanted to point that out as an example that this allow option is really the mandatory, what we have to do. And if we go beyond that, we can encourage or incentivize by having provisions that are less than that. So I see another question from Commissioner Bergen.
Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. Sorry to be so question heavy tonight. So can you clarify for me? I think this is what you said was if we select one or we as a a city at large, not we necessarily as this body, but we select to go with some of the provisions from the first category. We can't pick and choose which provisions. It's one set of those standards. Is that correct? Or did I hear, did I miss here on that?
Yeah, no, if, that is not correct. I didn't mean to give that impression. So for each different standard, we can decide differently. So for one standard, we could go like parking, we could say, well, we want the most parking that we're allowed to by state law. So we're going to go with the allow option. And then, but for, what's another one here? But for lock coverage, we want to incentivize a higher lock coverage than the minimum standard we're required by state law. So we can pick and choose for each different standard where we want that to land.
Oh, okay. Great.
Does that clarify? Yeah, I'm glad you asked. Thanks, Commissioner.
I have a follow-up on that same question.
Sure.
Um, if, for instance, on say, let's look at the siding standards there for the lot, lot size. Could we say, for instance, for the triplex, we'd like to go with a lesser minimum, but with the fourplex, we'd like to use the OAR minimum. So it's not, the siding standards are not one choice as well.
I would say that's true also. Yes, it's correct.
Thank you.
How I would understand it. Yep. Great questions and I'm happy to entertain them throughout. So that's fine. I didn't, I don't want it to get too confusing. And a lot of this can already be very confusing. So I'm happy to clarify along the way. So really the first question I pose is the first area for flexibility is in how we define the middle housing types themselves. It's pretty clear that the, the least we have to do is allow your more traditional duplex, triplex and fourplex. Oftentimes people think about them in their traditional sense that they're just attached units that share a wall. Fourplexes get a little different sometimes and there were some, I think these visuals here that represent how a fourplex might be also stacked. But the one area of flexibility that the state we could choose to allow is to allow these as detached units as well. Or some of the reasoning behind why we might allow the detached units is that for infill type of development where there may be a lot with a large backyard and an existing single family home, it can be difficult to attach another unit to an existing single family home, depending on building code requirements and other things. So the recommendation at least is that we do pursue the flexibility and we'll, you know, hear from the community on how that, how they feel about that, but that is the first question. And I see a hand.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Um, my reading of Senate Bill four fifty eight. Um, showed that if we were to allow detached units or detached plexes. Um, and then those plexes were subdivided. So let's say there was a fourplex subdivided into. You know, four houses on their own lot that were able to be owned. Because they would have to be identified as a fourplex upon um, the building permit phase, they would not be allowed to have an A D U. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, that is my read of that as well. I, I haven't, you know, our Assistant City Attorney Christina Kraus is on here. I'm not sure anybody's. You know, dove into the language too thoroughly, but on the face that that appears to me what the language says.
Thank you, Commissioner Bergen.
I did have a clarifying question and I believe I've asked it before. So if I did, please forgive me um, on. Earlier it talked about, excuse me, the difference between allowing triplex or well duplex, triplex, fourplex. Uh, to be detached versus being an eight, yes, the section right here, thank you, versus being an A D U is that eighty users are limited to eight hundred square feet. My question would be. If we are waiving S D C fees, which I can't recall if we currently, if we still are or if we're not. If we're waiving S D C fees that we're allowed to for A D U's, would we be equally waiving them for um. The second unit of the, for the situation that you had described where maybe you cannot add on to an existing building. Um, logistically, so where the fees would be different to where if in one lot, they say, I'm going to call it an A D U. And the next lot, they're going to call it a duplex, triplex or fourplex. Um, even though they're substantially the same thing, would the A D U fee or excuse me, the S D C fees be the same? Or are they going to be different?
Yeah, it's a great question and it, it definitely gets complicated because again, all these kind of differentiations become more. Gray, I think, um, the more we get into it and if Sandy or Christina want to chime in at any point.
I think that's a great question. I think that's a question ultimately for the city council and how they manage the S D C program. Um, and how they write those exemptions. So what I would say is adopt a development code that, I mean, the planning commission should make a recommendation. On the development code that they think works and then the council. Can take that updated development code and figure out how S D C's ought to apply to the development code. Rather than trying to match the development code to a prior S D C program, because that program I think will have to change depending upon. How middle housing is implemented and if the council's priorities for what they want to incentivize through that program change.
Christina, do you know though currently is the S D C. Or A D U's is still in effect? Is that through a certain timeframe at this point?
Um, it was not through a certain time, it was through a, a certain timeframe and then it was renewed and I believe that it's. Believe that it's still in effect. Um, I think it's been renewed annually or every other year. Um. We originally advised it as a trial program because there wasn't statutory, direct statutory authority for waiving those S D C's. But in the, um, in House Bill two thousand and one, the legislature added a reference to the ability to waive S D C's. That changes the um, legal advice that was kind of common. Uh, City Attorney legal advice previously that, that those programs might be. Questionable under the statutes and so um, that, I think that. I've not heard any intent by the city council to roll that back. So I think that it is still in effect. Um, but I would anticipate they would want to revisit it or change it at the point that these regulations are adopted.
Yeah, and that's my understanding as well. I think just more generally. Um, the way it has been at least and not speaking to what may be in the future, but that. If a duplex were developed, the S D C waiver wouldn't apply to that second duplex unit. If it say was over the eight hundred square feet or if um, somebody for some other reason wanted to call it a duplex rather than an A D U. But again, that, that could all change based on what Christina was just talking about.
Thank you for that and, and Christina, I appreciate your input also. I think um, my main. Thought process is if they're effectively the same, will our code look at them the same when it comes to that? Um, when we're talking about if we should recognize them to be attached. Or if we move to where we're recognizing them and allowing them to be detached. Um, what they look like together when you compare them side by side in the code. And not necessarily looking at what retroactive um, decisions might have been made. On um, the S D C's, just wanted to see if the intent here is if they are detached, detached units allowed. If they look similar as far as process goes to an A D U. Or if there, that is a differentiating factor.
Yeah, and that's a great question as well. And, and one thing I'll mention is that. So we have kind of dual state law requirements. So the state law says we have to allow A D U's. And we have to allow them as attached or detached. With House Bill two thousand and one, it says we have to allow duplexes. But we don't have to allow duplexes to be too detached units. We have to a minimum allow a duplex to be too attached units. So it could be, say, we end up at the place where the city says to do a duplex, they have to be attached. So if somebody wanted to do a detached unit, it would then have to be an A D U and couldn't be a detached duplex unit. Um. I think the other thing that kind of comes to mind is the size. There was a very. Conscious decision or part of the conversation through the rulemaking process that at the state level that we were involved with. That. They were trying to promote smaller unit sizes. And so for instance, allowing a, a fourplex on, um, I forget what the lot size is off the top of my head, we could look, but. Um, the idea is that the, they're trying to build in kind of a incentive to have four smaller units. On a lot with the idea that in theory, the smaller the units might lend themselves to being more affordable. I think it was kind of an indirect way of hoping that more smaller units would lead to a little bit more affordable housing. So. Hopefully that addresses your questions and.
It does. Thank you. And I was just thinking also, um, A D U and parking requirements would be different than. Um, a duplex potentially.
Yeah, that's a great point is that um. The city is prohibited from requiring an additional parking space for an A D U now. And that was as a result of new language in, um, implemented by House Bill two thousand and one. And so again, even House Bill two thousand and one itself included some new rules for A D U's. And so there is this difference between an A D U and a duplex and how the tr- city treats them. You referenced kind of in your question about the process piece and I think the city. Is going to be looking at that processing of, of, are they processed similarly? Or is there a difference in how they're processed? You know, one of the big pieces of the broader code update project outside of just implementing House Bill two thousand and one. And specifically why I think the housing phase of the project was first is to also address. The state law requirement that we have clear and objective approval standards for housing. And so that would include everything from an A D U or duplex all the way up to a large apartment complex. Um, and single family homes. And so having those clear and objective approval standards for all housing. Is really gets at the process piece as well, because it takes it out of the. Typical land use decision process, the formal process where we're required to send notice. And have an opportunity for an appeal period after a decision, a land use decision that includes any kind of discretion. By the city to approve it. It really makes these clear and objective approval processes. Uh, a ministerial or a type one um. Clear and objective process that doesn't have notice or opportunity for appeal. And so making sure those process pieces match up with the housing types, I think is critical as well.
Thank you for addressing my stream of questions. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. So I don't know if, if we want to kind of try and get through these questions and then provide kind of a broader conversation at the end. Um, maybe I'll just approach it that way and, but if people want to chime in, that's fine too. So that's the first question is should we allow the detached? Or um, keep it more strict and only do the minimum required and that is allow them to be attached. Plex units. This really doesn't play into the townhomes or cottage cluster, middle housing types. Um, cottage clusters are defined as detached units and then townhomes are. Uh, defined as attached units. So this question really has to do with the plexes themselves. The second area that there's some flexibility for the city to allow. And I, I referenced this earlier on is should we allow cottages on individual lots? I think as we've discussed, Senate Bill four fifty eight really will kind of make this. Um, not so much of a decision point. I think ultimately that new legislation will. Allow a person to divide cottages to be on their own lots. I, the staff recommendation even prior to the new legislation, Senate Bill four fifty eight was going to be that. We believe we should provide that flexibility. So to the extent we could propose building that in now, that's the direction we were going. Um, that was even. Based on the. Previous um. Draft housing code we released over a year ago, based on a lot of the tech input on the forefront of this project. That cottage clusters, a lot of the input was. Based on creating homeownership opportunities. And I believe that's a lot of the reason for the Senate Bill four fifty eight as well is that. Many of the middle housing types lend themselves more to being rental housing products. But the more of them you can divide and have on their own individual lots, it at least creates the opportunity that then that could be a fee, simple ownership. And provide additional ownership opportunities for housing. So anyway, that's why we even initially had proposed the flexibility of allowing cottages to be on their own lots. I see a couple of other hands, I think.
Commissioner Bergen.
This might be too much into weeds, but um, thinking about cottage cluster and from what I had originally thought. And understood what they were, I definitely appreciate um, the ability to potentially have them on their own lots. But do you know, um, if that would be, and, and I can always write down these questions and ask them all at the end if, if it's better. Um, but do you know if that would then enact an H O A type of community, it, since they do have that. Um, common area to where instead of it being one owner. That all of these units are on, that obviously would take care of the um. The common area, but turning it from that to potentially eight owners. Or, or what that number might be into that H O A type of structure. Do you, is that something that we're clear on yet?
Yeah, and I don't know if Christina would want to chime in here as well, but I think my understanding is there would have to be some mechanism. For figuring out how to address the common open space um. Issue within a cottage cluster, so.
So sorry, can you repeat the question? My, my child is having a meltdown in the background and I missed you.
Yes, I thank you. I was talking about at what point the cottage clusters would, if they were to be allowed. On Senate Bill four fifty eight, or if it's not even in that, that verbiage yet, um, if they were to be allowed on their own. Property, say there's eight cottages in the cluster, at what point, and if it is, if it would be an H O A. Um, type of um, environment enacted in to take care of the common area versus like. If there was just one owner on the land, that one owner obviously would be the one taking care of it. But when you divide it into each unit being individualized, if there is already a structure. To where it would have to be an H O A or is if that's not even on the radar or if it's too much in the weeds right now.
There are provisions around um, maintenance of common areas. Is my recollection from reviewing earlier drafts, so I'm just trying to find that language in the bill. Um, I believe the last time I saw it was still there.
And are you referring to the four fifty eight legislation?
Correct, yeah, that, because that would establish the ownership, um, that, you know, equitable servitudes and, and things like that that you're referencing that. The same standards obviously for development of that middle housing around how much, you know, common open space there would be. Would be established by the middle housing rules and not the new um, Senate Bill four fifty eight.
And I believe there was a contemplation in the, the rules, the H P two thousand and one rules. For how the common ownership or open space common areas would be kind of dealt with.
Yeah, so the, okay, if the, so it's city or county shall approve a tentative plan for middle housing land division if the application includes. And then among those are um. Evidence demonstrating, sorry. Will comply with building codes and property lines, that's not the right language. Um. Oh, proposed easements that are necessary. So that's one, kind of one way that. Um, pedestrian access to and from each one, common use areas or shared building elements. So it doesn't specifically. State that it has to be a um, H O A structure or like in the planned community development statute. I'm not seeing a reference to that there, but I, I do think there's. Some ability to review that there is common maintenance agreements or some way to provide for that. In that land division, but we might have to just wait for a little bit more guidance on how far we could. A jurisdiction could take that in terms of requiring them to form an H O A versus just requiring a maintenance agreement.
Yeah, so that's great. I appreciate that too, Christine. I think there are a couple of different ways that that could be dealt with and.
Commissioner Quigla.
Uh, yes, first of all, uh, thank you, Commissioner Bergen, for that question because uh, your knowledge of real estate. Uh, is very helpful in this. Um, a couple of uh, follow up questions regarding the divided lots. Um, I would certainly think that a condominium structure could probably work with something like that. Um, a couple of my concerns would be how would the utilities be divided? Um, in lieu of um, uh. You know, so it, it would each property, say for instance, need a separate water meter. And then um, the follow up question to this, and again, this could be pretty far out in the weeds is if you do allow the, the. Division of these for um, separate ownership. Doesn't that do a de facto uh, change in lot sizes? That would uh, be a result of that.
Mr. Quigla, I can answer your question really quick on utilities. Under the Senate Bill four fifty eight, separate utilities for each dwelling unit is a standard. That you're allowed to impose. Um, I think you would be allowed to have different standards. Um, if the Planning Commission and City Council thought that was, there was a feasible way to do that, I, I think that would be tricky. So I wouldn't. Advise you to go down that road, but um, the state law doesn't prevent you from having more permissive standards. But that, so that's specifically called out. That's one of the first items they call out that's allowed.
And just to your, the, your point about condominiums, I think that's always an option that somebody could pursue. So say somebody built a triplex. Um, and then at the triplex, all three units were maybe on one meter. I don't know if that's current utility. Um, standards or not, but. Then later they could use this Senate Bill four fifty eight to divide. Well, actually they couldn't. I think if they were on one meter. Senate Bill four fifty eight would require them to be on their own meters, but under my understanding of condominium law is that. They could condominiumize those three triplex units. It's not considered a land division. And they could remain on the one meter. So you're, you're right. I mean, they're. That option is available now. People could condominiumize plexes around the cities. Christina?
I think there's the, the um, caveat that sub sets the policies around its meter services. And where they require meters. So they currently require a separate meter for an A D U. And so they, they may have different rules or more strict rules around the ability to have condominiums on the same meter. So I don't, I just want to clarify that in case the public are watching and thinking, oh, I could go condominiumize something I have right now. Um, that may not match what sub requires.
And then I forget, Miss Commissioner Cravila, was there a third part to your question that we didn't get to?
Yes, it was. Would there be, as a result of this property division? Would apparently create a de facto change in the allowable lot size per parcel. So there would no, if you could do this, that there would really no longer be a minimum lot parcel size.
I think that's true, the the new legislation. Again, this is a little bit speculative. I think the legislation has passed and will become law. I I know I haven't personally, I've read the legislation at least once or twice, but not thoroughly examined it, but I do believe it says, and I don't have it in front of me at the moment, but I think it says something to the effect of regardless of density, we have to allow the land division. Christina, do you know if that's the case?
I'm not seeing the regardless of density, but I am seeing that you can't impose additional standards other than the ones that are laid out in that in that bill, and there is, there are not minimum or maximum lot or parcel sizes. The only requirements that we would impose around that are building code provisions around property lines and I mean, just ensuring that basically buildings don't cross over other property lines in a way that conflicts with the building code and the residential specialty code. And then and that there is exactly one dwelling unit on each resulting lot or parcel. Except for if there are common areas, then there can't, then that apparently doesn't apply to that, but I'm not sure. If that means that a common area could have multiple dwellings on it, I I don't we will have to look at that, but it appears that those are the really the main requirements around size. So I think that your observation is probably accurate in terms of it changing. Minimum and maximum lot sizes for a middle housing land division. It wouldn't necessarily change those for other types of land divisions.
Lots of lots of moving parts to all of this. This this new Senate Bill four fifty eight is obviously a very recent development that everybody's trying to integrate into. Already trying to figure out how to implement House Bill two thousand one. It's just making everything that much more complicated. So even at the state level, I was on a conference call with DLCD and a bunch of other jurisdictions just the other day and everybody's kind of grappling with these same questions and concerns or issues.
One thing that I will add is that where the middle housing rules set lot sizes for the triplex, then those still govern the overall, like the parent lot or parcel size. So it does, it, there's effectively some minimum or maximum sort of built into that because we're allowed to regulate that overall, like a triplex's overall parent lot size before it subdivided. It doesn't specifically apply to those individual lots, but it provides a little bit of a boundary.
So I'm going to jump to siding standards and design standards, kind of the differences between these two, if there's no other questions so far.
Mr. Crable, did you still have a question or is your hand up as a legacy?
I I can go ahead and proceed, I think.
Think you're good to go, Mark.
Okay, so siding standards. So there are two different sets of standards. There's and it can get a little confusing even in my mind to figure out the difference between some. So siding standards versus design standards. I think of design standards as as the clear one. It's like what the structure looks like, the appearance. So you know, the windows and the doors and the garage siding standards. These things are defined in the state rules for implementing House Bill two thousand one. I don't need to read this, I don't think, but it basically relates to the scale and the form of the structure. So this covers things typically like the lot coverage, the setbacks and your parking requirements and those types of things all fall into this category of siding standards. So and lots sizes is a good place to start, I think. So the rules, the state rules establish these that we have to allow a triplex on at least a five thousand square foot lot or no larger of a five thousand square foot lot and a fourplex on a seven thousand square foot lot now. Where we could incentivize or encourage more housing would be that we could say, well, you can we could either not have a lot size and say you can, how many ever? If you want to do a fourplex on whatever size lot down to the three thousand square foot lot size that we're proposing for the single family home zone that we're proposing to change the name of, but so that's an area of flexibility where we could actually reduce those lot sizes. I think this would be an area where it would really lend itself towards the incentivize option to consider how that might look along, say, busier transportation corridors or something along those lines or nearer to, say, commercial zoned centers or areas. One way I have been thinking about these options. It's not my decision, but the incentivize option, I think, is an area we could always move into later. So if we get down the road, you know, a little over a year from now and get some House Bill two thousand one compliant codes adopted. But maybe don't build in incentivize options at this stage. Over the next three or four, I think by two thousand twenty five, we will have to implement also House Bill two thousand three, which is the housing production strategy and housing needs analysis work that will be required to do. I would, I could see through that process, relooking at ways to further implement House Bill two thousand one to kind of ease up restrictions potentially at that point. To reconsider whether or not we wanted to say allow four plexes at that stage on smaller lots in certain areas like along transportation corridors or things to incentivize them further. Based on our need for housing that's determined through that House Bill two thousand three process, but that's just me thinking out long term. It doesn't mean we couldn't try and incentivize some of it now, but so that's an area that I think will be a a topic for conversation for sure. And as Commissioner Cravila and others have pointed out and now considering some of this other new legislation for the lot divisions. You know, some of these lot size standards come into play with thinking about them being further divided. Other siding standards, the height limit is a big one. Current, under the the state rules, we have to allow at least a thirty foot height for these middle housing types. We could allow them to be higher than that. And or we could have no height limit at all. So those are options to consider. I'm just, the the lot coverage conversation in my mind plays into a little bit of the height. All these siding standards create, or not all of them, but when you think about some of these siding standards in conjunction with each other. They create basically the building envelope of the property where you can create structure, both a three dimensional building envelope, height and width and depth and the setbacks from the property lines. So as has been discussed, there's these minimum standards and I think creating a diagram as requested and suggested to show here's the, you know, the least we have to allow or the most we have to allow showing the setbacks and the height and what that looks like versus maybe having a couple of other options of how it might be maximized. Will really play into what the massing of these structures, how they are integrated into existing neighborhoods or just into the community. The the lock coverage has been a big topic of conversation related mainly to stormwater. And I don't want to get into the stormwater conversation now necessarily, but we could I guess, touch on it further if we need to, but we're contemplating because of new, I guess federal and state regulations related to the city's permit under the Clean Water Act for dealing with stormwater of of how we're going to need to require individual developments to manage their stormwater. And I'm, I haven't really I'm probably not saying this exactly how it should be said, and Christina can chime in at some point, but so the MS four permit, I think we've talked about this before and you've hopefully heard of it at least. The MS four permit is an acronym for the stormwater permit that the city operates under. And so we're being we're going to be under a new stormwater permit from the state that's going to require the city to essentially require new development to treat their stormwater differently. In my mind, that impacts all development, but including middle housing on how much of a lot will be able to be covered versus how much, excuse me, how much of the lot will need to be used to treat or retain stormwater. So one idea is to not really regulate lot coverage that we may rather than the typical way of regulating lot coverage is by the amount of structure that can cover the lot area as a percentage of the lot is move away from that and regulate impervious surface area. And one of the reasons for that is currently under our lot coverage standard, we don't contemplate things like patios, for instance. So if somebody could pave a large concrete patio in their backyard after their home's been there for some time and create a lot more impervious surface area that then creates more stormwater runoff that might impact their neighbor or run more stormwater to the street and impact the city's stormwater system. There are assumptions made related to stormwater and impervious surface, how much of a, based on our existing lock coverage standards and kind of using typical development, how much impervious surface might be associated with that, like a driveway, for instance, for your typical home for a two car garage or whatever. But um, it's really not regulated otherwise. So anyway, one of the ways we're contemplating, and if we look at the draft code section that's in the packet tonight for residential, we've proposed moving towards an impervious surface coverage standard rather than the more typical lock coverage standard. But the state rules, at least for middle housing, do specify the lowest lock coverage that we're allowed to require. And it relates to the same amount that we require for single family homes. And I don't know if Commissioner Cravila had your hand up for a second, if you saw the question.
Uh, yes, I do regarding impervious surface coverage. If I'm looking at attachment three on page eight of twelve. It shows the hillside development proposal, impervious surface coverage as sixty percent maximum. And it strikes me that I think hillside development currently is at thirty percent maximum. So I'm not sure if we're missing something on the your matrix there on the because it would seem to me that increasing doubling the impervious surface in hillside development area would be unwise.
And I can double check that. My recollection is this is the existing standard for hillside development. It's kind of buried in a table in the existing code. But I'm happy to double check that. The intent was for us to leave the hillside development standards alone through this code update process. We're not, at least through phase one and phase two of the code update project not proposing to update the hillside development standard section at this point. That would be a section we will get to with phase three of the code update project. So the idea was that these would remain the same. But I'm happy to double check that.
Yeah, that would be great. I I had thought that hillside development was at a thirty percent maximum could be.
And this maybe is here's a thirty five percent, and I think this is the controlling. So this is for lots of parcels, more than fifteen percent slope or above six hundred feet. That is the hillside development standard. And that's referencing this section of code that is the hillside development standard section. So the impervious surface must not exceed thirty five percent.
Okay, so the new code shows sixty percent as the.
Yeah, I think what's happening here is this table isn't matching the provision above. So this table needs to be updated. So this this line has a separate section here, I think, is kind of the problem that you're you're showing. So that's a good catch. I think this table didn't get updated to reflect the standard.
Okay, yeah, I see up in number one, it's thirty five and then down below it's, okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, so that I think is kind of a typo that that this table needs to be fixed. This this number one, actually, all three of these, one, two, and three are I, my recollection is this is verbatim out of the existing code, that these are the existing standards. It's just the table didn't get it quite correct. So good catch. And I'm happy to fix that. I'm gonna just scroll back up here with time, quick time check. It's seven oh five. I can kind of try and move through. So we just talked about lock coverage. Parking is likely to be another big topic of conversation, at least it was through the rulemaking process. How many parking spaces we require for these? This is out of the feedback from the technical advisory committee. I'm going to just scroll back down to this table. This was the one area that the technical advisor committee in general thought that we should require the most that we're allowed to by state law. Now, again, I think considering reduction in parking from the most we can require in certain areas might make sense through a encourage or incentivize option. But the recommendation at this point, at least from staff, would be to require the most that we're allowed to by state law. So then the second set of standards is design standards. This has more to do with the appearance. This is another area that the technical advisory committee recommended using the the state model code standards. It was felt basically or generally that these are such kind of pretty a light set of standards that they didn't feel it would preclude middle housing from being developed. There's essentially these three standards. There's entry location facing a street. You can see these reflected in the code language, how much of a front of a structure is covered in window. How much garage coverage? Those are kind of the design standards. Let's see if I reflect it in this table down here. I don't think I get too much into the design standards in this table. It doesn't look like this is more just siding standards. But we could get it, we could look at the code more specifically for those. But in general, we could not require any design standards to be met as the, you know, reduced option or the incentivize option. But again, the the technical advisory committee input at least was that they felt that these were very reasonable standards and that it's not too onerous to require them. And then this last question, number eight, is more just the big picture. If you zoomed out forty thousand foot level. I'm kind of back to, I think, Commissioner Bergen's, one of her early questions was do we have to pick all one column or another column? And and the answer is no, we can pick and choose from different columns for different standards, but this question kind of gets at just in general, where should we land? And again, this is And again, this is the idea of a concept for a survey question from the community feedback standpoint. But obviously, the preceding questions get into the more detail, so. With that, I'm gonna, I wanna leave the rest of the time for questions and discussion by the commission. I I'm happy to dive into more of the code language or any other specifics we could get into, but I'll stop talking at this point.
Thank you, Mark. Um, great work from staff, as always. It's definitely a lot to cover in ninety minutes, and I'm looking forward to the next year of work on this. I know we'll have plenty of time to dive into the details and come to a recommendation. We're proud to refer to council. And I think tonight we want to focus on, I guess, just glaring detail, you know, anything that might be glaringly wrong before this draft goes to council for their first peek at it. So if any commissioners have any comments there, we'd love to see your hands in the queue. I can start us off. I just have a couple things that I'm thinking about. Um, first, I'm just excited about Senate Bill four fifty-eight. Um, I'm the only renter on this commission. There is nothing wrong with being a renter and with the way that the housing market currently exists in Springfield, I there's no feasible path to be buying a home in the near future. So just really excited that now there's some homeownership opportunities within implementation of Hospital Two Thousand and One. Studies have shown that fee simple development such as row houses, and then now with these subdivided middle housing are more feasible and allow those those traditional financing methods. So I think it's just exciting. Um, some work again, across the river, conducted by Eco Northwest through a DLCV grant, showed that even just by meeting the minimum standards established by the state, new construction of middle housing actually comes out a little bit below area median income. So that's exciting, too, that a new construction duplex could come into the range where I could potentially have a path to buying a home, and so could other renters. Um, the other thing that I'll say is something that's weighed on me ever since our public hearing with the patrician is how vulnerable manufactured home parks are being low-density residential and having Hospital Two Thousand and One applied to them. And something that came out of the state was that Hospital Two Thousand and One was not applicable to areas in Portland specifically zoned manufactured home parks because they did not allow single-family detached dwellings. So with that, um, I wanted to know if there was any thought from staff about pursuing creation of a manufactured home zone or what other preventative measures there are to hopefully not see the the yeah, the the rezone or reuse of them in the future.
Great, yeah, great question, Chair McKinley, about the manufactured home parks. And I'm just pointing out the difference between the manufactured home subdivision versus a manufactured home park. So the city of Springfield does not currently have a manufactured home park zone. It's a, that's a type of a permitted use within our broader residential zones. My understanding is the city's part of our, you know, work plan at this point doesn't contemplate creating a manufactured home park zone or overlay district or anything at this point. It doesn't mean that we couldn't pursue that at some point. I don't know if Sandy's still on the meeting and wants to chime in at all. I think there's potential, again, I think I referred to this earlier about the implementation of House Bill Two Thousand and Three. I think there's a lot of work that will be done over the next four years to implement House Bill Two Thousand and Three and for housing production strategies and our residential land inventory. And so there might be an opportunity through that type of process to consider just off the top of my head, that type of a discussion.
Thank you. Are there other, oh, Sandy, go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner McKinley, I think you raised a really good point, and I hadn't actually thought about that approach. Um, one other thing that comes to mind as a potential solution that we could look at, as Mark said, you know, when we're trying to relook at our inventory supply and demand, such would be some of the more vulnerable parks maybe at a higher density, like medium density. And so one of the things that I think that the proposed code that Mark has is doing is allowing those manufactured home parks in medium-density zones because they don't all have to be the larger size models that would be more conducive to the low density. So that's just something else I'll call out in your for you to see as a change in the code. But I think your point about the vulnerability of the parks and how to protect those is a broader topic that we haven't really thought about it, and I think it's worth thinking about.
Thank you for expanding on that, Sandy. Are there commissioners with other questions about this project? I see Commissioner Gil.
Thanks. Um, yeah, thanks for all of this work and the good presentation. In thinking about, well, big picture first. When this code development or code revision process began, it was made abundantly clear, I thought, that the city council was looking for making development easier and making the code clearer and simplifying it. So um, I'm glad to see some of the recommendations in this reflect. I guess, you know, like i- in that document, it's the allowable versus incentivized versus the middle one, which totally has left my head just now. Just that this also applies to getting more housing options in this city and not just for the already functioning developers in the city. So I I just would like that to be still kept in mind in this overall process. The other thing I'd like to keep in mind is the simplicity of it. So as we were going through today, and there was conversation about uh, future adjustments to lot size, lot size provisions, or where parking might be, you know, lowered requirements in certain areas. That's when you start getting a complex code that's really hard for people to know, like, well, what is a a street that's accessible to to public transportation? And what does that mean? And what happens if LTD changes that street because their use has been lowered or whatever? So I just want us to keep in mind that simplicity approach, and so while it may not be appropriate everywhere, maybe it it is appropriate because we also need to keep in mind that just because it's allowed to happen doesn't mean that we're gonna have fifteen fourplexes put in one neighborhood, right? So I just wanted to put that out there, that that was kind of the mandate from my understanding from city council, and I just want to keep that in mind as as we continue through this. That said, I think public comment and engagement is super important in this process, and I really hope that this body and city council pay close attention to that, even though that sort of higher-level goal is still out there. Another comment I had on the document with the questions that sort of for the middle housing where you're kind of laying out the approaches. The one that's about the design standards and the the state model code is a little unclear to me, and if, and maybe it's okay if the recommendation is not gonna be in there. But it's sort what the recommendation says sounds a little bit different than the three options below, because it sounds like, oh, these are pretty, you know, standard and achievable, but we could make them more flexible. But this part makes it sound like it's not that much different. But the options below make it seem like there's a bigger difference. So if if this is gonna go out to the public, just really clarifying the language in this section, I think, would be important to do. And the design standards are where people, I think, often have a little more challenge grasping the impacts of those and why they're important. I mean, when you look at a, how much space you can fill on a lot, that's pretty clear, but these ones are are harder for people that don't live with it all the time. So maybe if you could look a little bit on that section before this goes public, I think it might be helpful for people to be, have the ability to provide meaningful feedback. And then I guess also before you go out to the public with it, you might reconsider the term incentivize because out in the public, incentivizing often means financial-related incentives. And I know that that is not the intention in this, but you might set yourself up for a lot of interesting questions if if you leave it in there. And I think it's clear, but I think people are gonna be like, wait, how come we're providing these kind of incentives for these things and who gets that and all of that? So it might be worth considering a different word for that, and I don't have a good example, but I'll think about that if you're interested in having another brain think about that. And then I do have some like specifics on some of the code language, which I will send to you separately because they're little things. But one thing might be worth considering, which Sandy sort of brought up just now, is the things that are not like word change. I don't want like the strike stuff, track change thing, but if there are areas to highlight where there's a substantial change, like the one that Sandy was talking about with the manufactured homes, that's different to just if there's a way to highlight that for people in the public. Because I know if I'm looking, I mean, I know I was looking at this, and I'm like, okay, wait, so here's what the old one was, and here's what the new one was, and I don't think I need to compare everything word for word, but if there's some and I don't quite know what would be the trigger, but if there's some sort of substantial things, obviously, all the middle housing stuff is a big thing, so there could be a summary for that. But if there are some other ones, like the one that Sandy pointed out, that is addressing these things, it might be helpful to highlight or do provide that for people just to help them, again, provide meaningful feedback. But again, thanks for your work.
Yeah, and and I really appreciate all your comments, and any detailed stuff you have would be greatly helpful as well. And um, I am working on kind of additional public outreach materials, and and one of those includes kind of a a table or a comparison list of existing and proposed, kind of where the more significant changes are. So hopefully that'll be, you know, highlight for people where some of the bigger changes are. So but definitely thanks for your input.
Thank you, Commissioner Gil. Are there other comments or questions from the commission? It's a lot to digest tonight. I guess, I guess with the last few minutes, we have most, my understanding of the minimum standards is most of the minimum standards set a floor with the exception of the design standards kind of setting a ceiling. So can you walk us through how the model code impacts the design standards and what our flexibility is there?
Yeah, it, and and that's a great way to put it. I like your terminology of the floor and the ceiling, and I think you're accurate in how you state that. So the the, there's this interplay, so the the state developed and adopt LCDC, the Land Conservation Development Commission, that's the commission over the Department of Land Conservation Development. They adopted the Oregon Administrative Rules to implement House Bill Two Thousand One. As part of those administrative rules is the state middle housing model code. It's kind of an exhibit to the rules. And so there's this interplay between the administrative rules and the model code. And so when it comes to it, it's different, I think, for each middle housing type, but when it comes to what the design standard, I'll, I'll use Chair McKinley's term, the the ceiling is the the most design standards that we can require for the different middle housing types. The rules don't get into the specific design standards. It refers to the model code that the state develops. So even if we as a city jurisdiction don't adopt or, you know, fully use the state model code for specifically the design standard section, the administrative rules say what is allowed to be required in the model code for design standards is the most that a jurisdiction can can require. So those, that is what this survey kind of gets into. I don't get into all the specifics necessarily. Just fine. So the design standards, so we talk about appearance, which includes window coverage, driveways, parking configuration. Now, it's interesting, I've, I've actually questioned DLCD staff on multiple times. Both design standards, less parking configuration, and then up here under signing standards. It talks about minimum, maximum parking. So parking's kind of in both, and I've, the state has been reluctant to provide too much input on when something is a design standard versus a siding standard. And in some of these statewide kind of open forum discussions with DLCD about implementing House Bill Two Thousand One. It's interesting hearing what some other jurisdictions are coming up with in terms of creative standards, whether they're siding or design standards for they're actually implementing new standards for single-family homes so that they can implement them onto middle housing. And one of the ones that I had never heard of before, and that was unique to me a little bit, and I don't fully understand it, but it was it's the slope of a driveway. And I can't even remember which jurisdiction it was. It's the approach slope of a driveway accessing a single-family home. So they have a standard that the approach slope for a driveway can't exceed a certain percent slope. Anyway, so with that, i- it gets complicated to decide some of these other standards. I will just mention, and we haven't really talked about this, but specific to design and signing standards, a jurisdiction can try to justify standards in addition to these these standards as specified in the model code. There's kind of an exception process. The state, the city or the jurisdiction would have to write findings based on a whole set of criteria establishing rules that are pretty subjective to try and justify these additional standards. So Chair McGinley, I don't know if that kind of gets to what you were looking for in terms of clarification or addressing it further, but. I kind of got on to rambling a little bit of a tangent there, but.
Thank you. You addressed my question. Um, it looks like we're at seven twenty nine. Um, are there other thoughts or questions from commissioners before we move on? All right, I'll just say um in June, we'll be meeting as the CCI and we'll be thinking about. Um, who who we need to hear from and how we're going to ask them information. And so. I encourage everyone on the commission to sit and think, okay, how would I ask, how would I ask my neighbor about this? How would I ask my friends about this in ways that they would understand? Because it's um really robust information. Um, thank you, Mark, for being with us here tonight and we'll see you again soon. Oh, sorry.
Could I just mention one last thing I meant to mention and and that is we do kind of anticipate trying to meet with the commission. Throughout the rest of the summer as we move into summer, as we're going through the community outreach phase to. Continue to kind of take these deep dives into different sections. So anyway, for what it's worth, I hope we'll continue to have these. Detailed conversations about different sections of the code as well. So as we get to the public hearings process in the fall. Um, you will have seen a lot of it in detail already.
Thank you for that clarification and um yes, I anticipate us seeing you soon in further work sessions. Um, I will also make the clarification that the Zoom link is not changing for the public hearing, so we'll be right here. But with that, I uh close the work, I adjourn the work session. And really quickly, we'll turn around. And I hereby open the regular session of the planning commission. Our roll call has not changed since the work session, um but I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And Brenda, would you mind sharing the flag?
Sure.
Thank you.
Normally Sandy does it, so I had to hunt for it, so bear with me.
Thank you.
Oh, nope, there it is. Thank you, Sandy.
Great. Thank you, Sandy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Brenda, do you have anyone signed up for a public comment tonight?
Not tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? All right, hearing none. What we have on tonight's agenda is the approval of minutes. Um, we have quite a few minutes, a big batch of them from November fifth, twenty nineteen, March second, twenty twenty one. April sixth, twenty twenty one and April twentieth, twenty twenty one. And I'll note that. Because our meetings have moved to Zoom and are on YouTube. Um, the notes are uh not verbatim anymore. They're a summary because there are now um those really great video recordings. So. Thank you, Brenda, for putting that batch together. Are there any adjustments to the minutes or edits to the minutes? If there are not, are there any motions?
Move to approve the minutes um as presented.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bergen, seconded by Commissioner Landon. We'll do a roll call vote. And starting with myself, Chair McGinley, I. Vice Chair Landon.
I.
Commissioner Gill.
I. Commissioner Bergen.
I.
And Commissioner Quibla.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And do we have any reports of city council meetings?
We do. I had one last night. Let me flip my notes. If you want to skip to something, I'm I'm looking for my notes. Ah, there it is. There it is. The biggest kind of topic that they had last night was an awful lot of people uh called in. Uh unhappy about Springfield Police Department. There was a lot of discussion on that, took up a took up quite a bit of time. Kind of a general feeling, and I don't know if it's everywhere or if it's kind of just Springfield, but critical of SPD being. Being a little bit uh over harsh. And that kind of sums it up. There weren't really other items of. Major business, some training topics that they covered.
Thank you, Commissioner Landon. There are other reports of council action. I will note that the um budget, um the budget presentations are posted on YouTube. They were posted on YouTube last year, and I thought it was a format that worked really well with the department heads. Um each presenting um their proposed budgets and. It's a tough time for municipalities with uh COVID nineteen pandemic and. Um, I think the the council will be making some important decisions soon with the budget. Um, I also saw some emails in our uh planning commission inbox with reports of council action, and there were some that were. Vent interest to commission um as far as some CETA action over in Glenwood. All right, seeing um no other hands. Do we have any business from the development and public works department?
Yes, um I have three things to share. Uh, first of all, uh Jim Donovan, who is our current planning supervisor, will be retiring at the end of this month. So. Will be missing him. We're looking at what to do in the interim until we have a more permanent position. Um, but don't have that quite in place yet. But if you have had any interactions with him or whatever. You might want to just send off a note before he's actually. Not working with the city anymore. Uh, secondly, as I had um in follow up to Commissioner Bergen's suggestion last time, talked with our representative at. People Speak, which is who hosts our Springfield, Oregon speaks about, could we add some information on Springfield, Oregon speaks such as. Um, Commissioner Bergen had suggested the list of your council. Meetings that the commissioners are assigned to, and he thought it was a great idea to have a page where there's information that commissioners could go for information. So um I'd sent an email out, but I'm also taking this opportunity to ask, is there any other information? That you would like to have on the People Speak platform, Springfield, Oregon speaks. Um, is there anything like, for instance, on the website that you usually go to that? Would be helpful as a commission to just have that. Accessible on Springfield, Oregon speak, so we can work on making that. Page. Create a page for you all in which to have that type of information, and it could be where we put future training materials. As an example, so. We take a few moments if you have any ideas about that before I go on to my third item.
Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. I don't know if this would be an appropriate place or appropriate item to have on there. Um, but the um dates that are of importance that. Sandy, you often bring to our attention and Commissioner McGinley also brings to our attention um of things that would. Be relevant, trainings that would be relevant to us and not just trainings that we've had through in this body here. Um, but dates that we can travel to or specific meetings. Um, I don't know, sort of like a calendar of events. From reports from us, or like I said, reports from the department. So that we can go back to one space and reference the date, location and um registration options for that. If that would, if that's a feasible option.
I mean, we're we we can explore it and see what what they say.
Commissioner Quibla.
Uh, would it be possible to get links to uh certain items like, for instance, the? Was thinking any of the results of any of the citizens' input on like Main Street or um. The code updates once we get those.
Potentially, I mean, we usually include those types of information links um within the packet, if that's an agenda item. Um, and of course, those there are compilations on the webpage for each of those projects, but we could look at maybe having. Links to those, some of those critical project webpages. Um, so I can see if there's a way to um have links. Not just documents, but actually links to our webpage um on that type of a. Document, and then that could take you to those public comments sections.
Yeah, I I think that'd be really useful, um particularly for the public if they were just interested in. Not in a particular planning commission document or uh agenda. But if they were interested in what the planning commission is doing in general, that links like that would be very useful.
I think it would be helpful to have um those, I also love your cat. Um, I think it would be helpful to have those uh videos that you've recorded of training sessions during our work sessions and. Oh, gosh, was that fall of twenty eighteen now? Um, I believe we had Patrick Wingard come from DLCD. I do recall that the video files were quite large, and so if that's problematic, I understand, um but. Uh, thought it might be interesting for if somebody's completely new to planning commission and just wants to understand what we do and how we do it.
Um, yeah, and unfortunately, we didn't. Even though we took videos, we didn't. They they didn't end up all getting saved for various reasons. So um and unfortunately, that was before we went virtual, so they weren't great quality either. But we can look and see what we have. Christina, you want to say something?
Yeah, so the city attorney's office had a work session with city council last night to talk to them about their training. And they um discussed that they would like to have some training available to the public on topics that could help the public. Um, that's not always a city attorney's role. Uh, Mary Brida talked about working with the library. Um, on some of those topics, but one of them that the um commission discussed or the council discussed would be a good area. Um, to have just a video available for them when they view, when they are making land use decisions, but also. I think there's good overlap with the public. Um, is just the land use, you know, basics of a land use public caring process, and then also the training that I provide to you on. Complex of interest and expertise contacts, and that kind of information would also probably be helpful to the public. So that is something. That I am going to be trying to find time to work on, hopefully before the next round of um public hearings that are. Land use public hearings. That are quasi judicial that you'll be doing. Um, and that's my goal. We'll have to see what my workload will allow, but um the council. Was very supportive of the idea of making training videos available to the public as well. So um that's one that I will work on and. And provide to the planning commission and hopefully the public at some point. Before too long, I hope. So if there's any land use specific topics that commissioners would like covered or think would be helpful. That are maybe not the obvious things that would be included, please feel free to send me an email with your ideas.
Thank you, Christina and Sandy. Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I I love that idea and I want to applaud that um idea of allowing. Training videos for the public because I feel that a lot of public, once they felt more comfortable to process, it would be more comfortable in speaking out. Um, and sharing their opinions with us, and really that's what we want. So I think if we're able to get more. Uh, the public to be comfortable in that in that realm, um I think that would be, that would only benefit our city. So I think that's amazing. Thank you for sharing that.
Commissioner Gill.
Um, just one more thing to add to that when you're when when we're thinking about the public in general. For these issues, it might be worth considering. Breaking up. Components of the process, if possible, into small chunks. Um. I, we find in our work that people will absolutely watch. The five minute tutorial or the ten minute tutorial, but if you give a how of half half hour, they're not going to do it. So if there's. Pieces where you can say this is a series, here's the part where you find out about. Public input times and how to do that, or this is the one to find out about this piece of the process. Um, that way they can see them all, but they might not have to, you know, sit and listen for a long period of time. Just that's been art.
Okay, so I'm moving on to my third item is your upcoming meetings. So uh we do not have anything scheduled for. Sorry. For the first meeting in. Um, June, but we do have your second meeting will be full. So um we have uh Mark coming back as he mentioned uh to you as a. Um, committee for citizen involvement to share some of the um preview materials for the open house and such. He's asking for ninety minutes. We also have another. Zone change plan amendment for Marco Lamedo's coming to you for a public hearing that night. So first question for you would be whether you would want to start. The. Um, work session at five thirty to keep on our regular meeting usual start date, which. The seven, I mean, today we did it at seven thirty, but we also didn't have any public hearings scheduled, so. We usually have public hearings at seven. So just wondering your input in terms of whether you want to start the work session at five thirty or six and then. We can go on to future meetings after that.
I could adjust.
I'm especially interested in hearing from the parents for what might work better.
I guess that might be me. Um, I I'm. Flexible, uh whatever is going to work best for you, um those presenting and uh whatever it, whatever it's going to be. Um, I'll be there for it. So I I thank you, Chair McGinley, for that consideration.
So I think we still have a teenager here, so I guess I count on that one, too.
Well, if it's all the same to you all, I would suggest we start the work session at five thirty and then we'll start the regular session at seven. And then the following meetings, um Mark had mentioned as he was closing his remarks. That he would like to. Talk with you about upcoming meetings. So, Mark, do you want to come back on and kind of talk about? Frequency over the summer and get their input on. How much they're going to want to dive in?
Yeah, thanks. And so tonight, I think, was a great example of a a couple of commissioners mentioned, you know, if we're getting too far into the weeds and and actually, that's. What I was hoping would happen tonight, and I I want to give the opportunity to get into the weeds. And so. There's a lot of other code sections. We touched on, you know, maybe. I don't know, not even ten percent of the amount of code that is going to be ultimately going to. Public hearing in the fall in front of you as a planning commission body first after the community outreach this summer. So wanting to start diving into the other code sections as well, and so. Trying to assess your comfort level or your interest level and. Wanting to have similar types of work sessions with a lot of the other code sections. Again, I did mention that housing is likely to be the big topic. Um, and the housing code sections are the sections that have the most changes. The employment land sections and the development standard sections, for the most part. Are staying much more consistent with existing code. It's they've been reformatted and. Along some of the lines of, I think, what Commissioner Gill mentioned, trying to simplify and make it easier to use and understand. That's really the majority of the changes in the other code sections, but there's some, there's some changes. And then then the procedures one is the other one that gets. It can tend to get a little wonky in terms of. The process of how we process land use applications, but anyway, it'd be my desire to bring all these code sections. To you in different work sessions, maybe one a month or maybe. I forget how many you you meet twice a month, so we could even do them. Maybe one a month or maybe, I forget how many, you, you meet twice a month. So we could even do them um, at every meeting, depending on what your agendas start to look like over the summer. And I don't know about anticipation of breaks and things like that. So.
So typically, Mark, they meet two, two times in July. They're off in August. They don't have the first meeting in September, and then they meet on the 21st of September. So there's three meetings that would be their recess, if you stuck with the same schedule.
So my thought would be, I, I would definitely have enough um, content to bring to you to fill easily in my mind, three 60-minute work sessions, if not more.
Commissioner Quibb.
Uh, yes, I'd be very happy to attend uh, whatever meetings uh, in anticipation of the uh, to help finalize the code. So um, I don't even personally need a summer vacation.
So it looks like there's support for meeting throughout summer. And as a reminder, we do have some um, excused absences for when we do go on trips. And fortunately, now these are on YouTube. So they're just really easy to go back and re-watch. Um, unless this is your idea of a good time, like Commissioner Quibb, that's my idea of a good time, too. Um, great, Mark. It looks like we'll be seeing a lot of you this summer.
Sounds great. I look forward to it. Thanks.
So Commissioner Quibb also asked if there's a planned celebration for Jim Donovan. Um, not that I know of. I mean, we're still kind of dealing with this COVID situation and um, but if there is, and if it's open to the capacity of inviting lots of people, I will let you know.
Like, I, I'd certainly think we could do something socially distanced at a park or something. I mean, it, it is kind of a, it's a, it's a milestone. I think he's been at the city for probably 30 years.
I believe it's closer to 40. I think he's been there. A long, long time.
Been more like 26.
Twenty, oh, 26 years, 40-year career then.
He's younger than.
Said 40 in some conversation the other day and it's stuck in my head. Thanks, Brenda.
He just acts like an old man.
He, he has been with the city for a long time and he's had um, multiple positions at the city. And so he's certainly leaving behind a legacy. And uh, so, well, miss him.
Thank you, Commissioner Quibb, for bringing that up. And I will note, I got a couple items backwards. I did business from development and public works first. Um, I meant to do business from members of the planning commission, but before I get to that, Sandy, did you have anything else to add? Okay, is there any business from the planning commission? I have a piece, I think this is my favorite agenda item usually. Um, so uh, I just wanted to note some um, excellent Springfield staff work. Um, Monica Sather will be speaking at a conference on Friday for engaging local government leaders. Um, I put together a panel through, through my professional capacity on um, uh, engagement strategies throughout COVID-19 and wanted to pull together some great examples of how communities reached uh, reached their residents throughout COVID-19 on important projects. And was thoroughly impressed with Monica's work on the open house for the UGB expansions, uh, wetland inventory. So um, but she'll be sharing that with folks from around the country on Friday. And great work to Springfield staff. Um, and then I had a question for Sandy, um, is whether there was any plan or what leadership conversations were looking like with going back to in-person planning commission meetings or, or what that will look like uh, going forward with new guidance coming from the federal level.
So what I can say is that the council is um, probably looking, I mean, some of this is just speculation because we don't really know what's going to happen if there's a variant or whatever could happen. But I think right now council is planning to come back in person in September after their break. Um, so they are uh, on their recess in July and August. So they'll stay virtual through June. Um, so I think typically um, committees would follow their lead. Uh, so it's a good question in terms of if the planning commission continues to meet over the summer. If you wanted to get back together before September, um, we could have that discussion. Um, there hasn't been any clear guidance.
Thank you, Sandy. And my third item is, um, we're recruiting right now. We have an open vacancy on the planning commission. Um, the deadline is June 1st. Um, so if you know of folks in Springfield um, that are interested in planning issues, um, interested in getting more involved with their community, uh, please, please, please tell them to apply. Um, we can have up to, I think it's two commissioners that live inside of UGB, but outside the city limits. So that's not a barrier. Um, but we can only have up to two people sharing the same profession. Um, please spread the word. Any other business from the commission? All right. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Springfield staff. And it sounds like we'll see you the third Tuesday in June. Um, sorry, the, yes, third Tuesday in June for a jam-packed night as this CCI and then with a public hearing. But until then, hope everybody stays safe and see you soon. And I adjourned this regular meeting. Good night.
Night, everyone. Night, Sandy.
You can stop recording.
I'm trying. My dog keeps hitting my hand.